Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It also incorporates, and let me check. You guys, you folks are at SB 2 town.
No.
You're a town meeting.
The school district is, but the town is not.
Well, this will affect both. Well, it'll affect the town then. You know that bond referendums require then for the town, a two-thirds vote currently.
Yes.
This bill incorporates that it'd be 60% for both SB 2 and town meeting laws. And when you think about the kind of HVAC modifications that may be needed in buildings for air exchange, this is something that we've learned in this last couple of months, that's an important thing to try to, it's already 60% for the SB 2s and to make it equal on both. And it includes amendments to the Economic Revitalization Zone and the Graduate Retention Incentive Partnerships, both of which allow businesses to make contributions to improve our communities and our workforce. You see how diverse these bills became? And how important they are that when this finally had its final vote in the House, the vote on this bill was 201 to 129. Two things to observe in that. 201 is a bipartisan vote. The other thing is that with 129 against it, it's not veto proof. So there's a lot of reason to talk about these bills and to try to get them before the governor and encourage the signing because there's just too much good stuff in these packaged bills. And they had bipartisan support. That bill, when it passed the Senate, was 24 to nothing. Each of those bills had hearings. And in the case of the omnibus bill, had second hearings. Other bills that I took a major interest in, worked with Representative Weber on a telemedicine bill. Had bipartisan writers. I worked with Senator Bradley, Senator Sherman, Democrat, Republican, and Representative Bill Marsh. And we put together a package that establishes rate parity between in-office visits and phone or, so in other words, voice or video consultations. And the importance of that is that before the pandemic, only 1% of all health care reimbursed by Medicaid in the state was delivered via telemedicine. It was an underutilized resource. During the COVID crisis, 80% of all mental health consults and 50% of all health care consults were taking place via telemedicine. This is something that, it's cultural change. And it's tough even on the medical doctors now to retain telehealth as they go back to in-office visits. But the importance of this vehicle, it just can't go back. So the only way to take, to ensure that it's going to be continued is to have an equal pay. But it establishes a commission. And the commission will, over four years, on evidence-based practices, determine if there are ways to use telemedicine to cut costs. And those are the kind of recommendations that can come forward in the future, but they'll be evidence-based and not just in response to a pandemic. It allows for clinics to do medically assisted treatment so that the doorway project in Keene, when somebody comes in, they don't need to wait for an in-office visit of that client, that patient. And it immediately can respond with Medicaid, medically assisted treatment for either drug or alcohol substance use. And it ensures that this went into 20 different health practice acts. The governor signed that bill yesterday, I'm sorry, Tuesday. And he also signed the broadband improvement bill. There's no money attached to it. Worked with Senator Deech from Peterborough on this bill and Senator Bradley, Republican Assistant Leader. And the importance of the bill is that when you go to do your overlay, when you do your delivery to the unserved communities, that if you've got a current provider who fails to provide you with information so that you can accurately map the underserved or unserved portions of your community, you no longer need to qualify that provider's area as served. So during the RFI process, where are you in the process?
Oh, we have our bond.
Yeah, you have the bond. It's a, good.
This is just a few months late for us, but it's a terrific bill.
It's a good improvement, another tool in the box. We celebrate that. I've heard from towns that are, you know, that this has been a hangup for them. I know West Milan had a lot of trouble doing that. Yeah, no, you're one of five towns in the Minatnok region that passed referendums this last, last season, March, I guess. Did you do it in March?
March 14th.
Amen. That's another bill that passed and is signed into law.
You got to open a wire.
House Bill 1129 will allow you to hold your town meeting in a virtual manner in 2021. So it only covers '20 and '21. But you will be able to do your town meeting in that manner. And you will be able to have an alternative voting mechanism, meaning if you want to do drive-up voting on your org articles, you could do that. Or following your town meeting, you could do a drive-up ballot. Let's see, other things that I, oh, the other one, and I see Commissioner Wozmac here, and I think that's you. And this has to do with long-term care. I know Maplewood wants to introduce a nursing assistance program at Maplewood. One of the hangups in doing so is that they were unable to be reimbursed for the costs of offering nurse assistance training onsite. That is now an approved Medicaid reimbursement cost. So you can seek up to 50% reimbursement for, and maybe it's even more than that, for those costs. And that's been signed into law. Getting beyond bills that I introduced, the drug reform bill is a huge benefit for this state. It drops insulin costs, and I'm glad the governor can take credit for it, but the legislators who proposed this, Senator Feltes, Senator Rosenwald, insulin is a covered cost and a capped cost. Epi pens now must be covered by any insurer in the state of New Hampshire. And cross-border bidding, bidding procedures for drug pricing by the three Medicaid plans in the state can include cross-country purchases, speaking of Canada, or it could be other countries. Another benefit that's been added to the Medicaid legislation has to do with the dental benefit. It is 90%, up to 90%, and I believe it is 90%, reimbursed by federal Medicaid. But we have not offered that to our Medicaid, through our Medicaid plan. Beginning April of 2021, that will be a supported benefit for all Medicaid clients in the state of New Hampshire. Another health care bill has to do with if you provide maternity coverage, you must include abortion services as a covered expense. In anticipation of federal court hearings, same-sex couples can continue to adopt children. There was, there's some concern that at federal level, court cases could be decided. This is kind of an interrupter and establishes a New Hampshire law as opposed to relying on the federal law. The statute of limitations on sexual assault crimes is eliminated with another piece of legislation. And another piece of legislation which has been signed into law prohibits the use of strangleholds by law enforcement. So you can see that these were, these are not actions that should have waited for another legislative session. It was really crucial for the House to come back into action despite being in Durham and for the Senate to hold the hearings on these grouped bills and be able to get consensus through both chambers. So I think a very productive session. And now we move forward. I serve on the Fiscal Committee in the Senate and also on the Joint Legislative Fiscal Committee. The state revenues are going to be shy in the last fiscal year by $150 million. We have a biennial budget, so that is not filled in the first 12 months, but will need to be filled by the time we reach the end of the 24 months of the biennial, biennium. Some of that can be filled, much of that could be filled, and there's likely to be a deficit in this current fiscal '21 year. Think in terms that it might be at least double that, 150 million, and it could be even more than that. Because already a half of the tax year has already expired. This tax year has more COVID months in it than the last tax year had. That's why federal legislation is so key to cover municipal deficits and state government deficits. Because we can't experience, we can't make that up quickly. We could tap into some reserves of the state in order to fill a good amount of those deficits, but if that happens and those are depleted, the next biennial budget is going to look really poor. And that's going to have a trickle-down effect to local town and municipal governments. So the push is on. Our federal delegation, I think, is doing a good job to focus on the fact that we've tried to compensate for individual income losses during this pandemic, compensate for business losses during the pandemic, somewhat for health care losses, but, and the school losses that have been compensated for are so small at this point, $213 per student in the state, that that's almost insignificant. And the point is, we have not come to ask municipalities or state government, how much have you lost in revenue as a result of the pandemic and tried to fill those costs? So this next round needs to cover that, and county losses ought to be included. But I guess one of the, one of the good, strong things is that I've heard in these talks with the towns in Cheshire County is that tax collections have been fairly stable for this first payment. And that's a very positive sign for the state, at least for our property owners, and a good sign for our schools, that the tax rates that they anticipated with the additional funding from the state for this year, that those tax rates can in fact be stable or go down because of the additional $100 million that the legislature appropriated. So with that, I, certainly I'll take questions, but I hope maybe our House members can jump in there too.
Could you go over the very first part where you talked about the school? If they didn't like the school, they'd go, oh, my camera kind of messed up. Can you just go over the first three or four minutes? So I can get that on.
The education omnibus bill.
Yeah, the very first thing you talked about.
Yeah, yeah. So some of the things that are in that education omnibus bill include probation and suspension modifications, so that students who face probation or suspension, that the discipline is age-appropriate and not a fixed term for any student. That students have a learning plan that's put in place during the suspension period so they don't fall too far behind, and that it's a formula for failure. So other aspects are a manifest hardship bill, that should a school environment not be supportive of a student which may have social or emotional issues with people in the school, that the parent can request a transfer either within the district to another school or out of district. And that there has to be a hearing and an appeals process. There's the requirement for multi-tiered system of support for students who have social and emotional behavioral disorders. And I left that out in the first iteration, but this sets a standard of care that involves parents at the first instance and involves the community and community resources as a supportive, and you've got to develop that support system for students. And how important that's going to be during this pandemic as a lot of services go remote and telemedicine becomes a vehicle not just for adults, but also to support the school It includes, so other aspects are the reserve levels for school districts are doubled so that as there are, we experience these fluctuations in appropriation levels or tax revenues, that schools can tap into those reserves, also for pandemic-like expenses or emergency expenses. They can't do it without first notifying the public, holding a hearing, and following the expenditures, issue a report through their annual reports on expenditures on how each of those dollars from reserves have been spent. It creates an opportunity for town meetings to pass their bond referendums at the same level, 60%, as a town referendum or SB 2 towns. And it incorporates business initiatives where businesses can cooperate with government on economic revitalization zones and graduate retention incentive partnerships. And then another aspect is to create, allow the university system to become an economic development partner with the Business and Economic Affairs Council. So what I use that for is to demonstrate that the legislature, in order to be efficient in moving bills from the House and the Senate to the full votes of both bodies, needed to combine pieces of legislation into a single bill so that we could have an efficient means of holding hearings on 13 bills at one, at one moment, or in one hearing, which would take three or four hours. But we got through them and that the House and Senate could both efficiently manage an agenda to consider all 33 of the bills. Sure.
Are there any other questions or comments? Lucy or Michael?
Well, I would just say, and I can probably be heard because I used to teach and I used to do playground duty, I had several things I was going to mention, but as the senator talked, I crossed all of those off, so you'll be glad of that. I do want to thank you, Senator Khan, for the initial broadband bill that allowed us to vote 135, or however many it was, to two, to pass a bond issue that is going to be of incredible service to everybody in the town. So I just really wanted to acknowledge that. And I acknowledge also your work in broadening the process there, but it's, it's so critical and it really has helped us move things along. So that was item one. The other thing I just wanted to follow up on is you mentioned the $150 million shortfall. And of course, the other thing for us to bear in mind is that we have had, under the CARES Act, an influx of $1.25 billion into the state. That is an extraordinary sum of money, what, about a tenth of the state budget? More, less? Anyway, in any case, it's.
It's half the word.
It's an extraordinary amount of money for us, and it's completely controlled by the governor. And the governor has made every effort to ensure that the legislature has not only no official input, but no oversight into how that's spent. And I just wanted to stand up for the legislature and say, we're actually suing to get a little more oversight of that, but it, that is a matter of enormous concern to me because it is the legislature that ought to have, and we have statutes that say this, that ought to have, at a minimum, accepted the money and approved a dispersal program, and that didn't happen. And I want to make it clear that while the governor stands up regularly and says the legislature was involved, he means that one or two, or maybe five, members of a 424-member legislature were invited to sit on an advisory committee that may or may not have been listened to. And in terms of the education recommendations, I think wasn't listened to very much. So I just want to put that out as a concern of all of ours going forward. And of course, the CARES money could not be used under the federal law to backfill what the towns need, but we do all hope very much that the next round will have some help for the municipalities and therefore for the taxpayers going forward. So thank you.
Michael, Cynthia, do you have anything you'd like to say, either of you? I can see that you get the microphone.
I think it all, it's fine. I'm in the midst of, just about finishing my third term in the legislature. And I serve on the Public Works and Highways Committee in the House of Representatives. The primary focus of that committee is developing a capital budget. And also, I notice on your agenda, the 10-year plan under the Department of Transportation. And a part of that is, although it's at the tail end of it, is the Vilas Bridge.
Yes.
And it's been a long process, and I know Cheryl Mayberry serves on the Transportation Advisory Committee of the Southwest Regional Planning Commission, which is involved, as all the regional planning commissions are, in developing this 10-year plan through the GACIP program. And it's a long and tedious process, and it competes with other sections of the state. But I also think, and I think you folks are well aware, and I think the school officials are, that when the budget was vetoed by the governor, it was through the efforts of the New Hampshire House that the money was restored for schools and towns for this biennium. And I believe in the case of Wallpole for the biennium, and biennium was $84,000, which is money that doesn't go onto the property tax, which I see as a problem, and I'm sure all of you do, where this has been the practice of the state having a balanced budget, but balancing it on the backs of the towns and the counties and the schools. That's all I have.
Thank you, Representative Abbott. Cynthia?
Thank you.
Catherine.
Actually, my name is Catherine. I'll answer to Cynthia, that's okay. I'd actually like to say something to the scouts in the back of the room, if I can find me. I am a mother of four Eagle Scouts, and yes. And I just can't tell you how much scouting has benefited them in their lifetime, the leadership qualities it gave them, the ability to take on a project and just run with it. So I really hope that you continue in your journey and wish you the best of luck. The only thing, everything I'd like to add is Senator Khan did a great job of explaining how we, how we got into the situation we got into on March 12. I had many people ask me, well, why didn't the House just do this? Or why doesn't the Senate just do this? Or why don't they just exchange bills? I just want to remind people, and especially since the scouts are talking about citizenship, we have to operate under a constitution that was written in the 1700s. So nothing like this could have ever been foreseen. We didn't have computers, we didn't have cell phones or anything like that. So the reason we were in that situation on March 12th and 13th is simply because we had a constitution that was written in the 1700s. And I just think sometimes people forget that we're under an obligation to still operate as best we can with the toolbill we have.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions? Any questions from the scouts that you'd like to ask? For anyone else?
School startup?
Of course. I'm hoping that all the representatives and senators here will consider in the next time around a job relocation bonus similar to what's in the state of Vermont. We're struggling here in New Hampshire to find talent, and Vermont is offering, I think, up to $10,000 if you relocate to their state and get a job in one of the critical areas. I think I've mentioned this before, I hope that in one of these rounds, somebody will consider it.
A question about the town meeting in 2021. Is that either live or virtual, or is it a mixed bag?
That's a good question.
I think it'd be mixed at this point, but I think that's a little still up here.
Okay.
But I'm pretty sure you can go 100%.
Virtual.
I just hope that it's not a, some of it could be virtual, some of it could be
I just hope that it's not a new, some of it could be virtual, some of it could be better if it was one way or the other.
Well, I think it's going to depend on whether the governor's executive order extend that far.
I realize it's a lot of influx.
We actually had temporary legislation as well, and I'm looking it up, but I don't think we can do that.
I think some of the concerns that I've heard are that not everybody's going to be able to Zoom in. There's going to be some bandwidth issues depending upon where you live. People will still want to physically show up, as they should, with, you know, social distancing and so forth. And I do believe in, we've held some meetings, not obviously in that way, but a blend of in-person and Zoom, and there are mechanisms to receive comments and questions from people on the Zoom thing, and get comments, introduce those into the record and so forth. So it's obviously a little more work. It is a backbone of technology that not everybody has available to them. And so the concept of a town meeting of removing somebody's right to participate in a public meeting is a very dear one, and balancing the risks of physical contact as against to the right to show up in a meeting is also very dear.
And it's horrible, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to point out, you mentioned the Viola's Bridge being in the 10-year plan, but it's only 50% funded in that 10-year plan. And the last meeting I was at, we talked about the Viola's Bridge. If that 50% funding doesn't materialize from somewhere, probably it won't get repaired. Okay. The other thing I'd like to ask about is future monies that may come through the CARES Act or various federal programs. It would be really helpful if we could use that money to prepare ourselves and prepare the town, should this happen again. Okay? We would like to increase our capability of emergency preparedness here in the town, and of course, money becomes an issue. And a lot of things that we're submitting get turned down because it's not appropriate at this time. But I do think that we need to, as a town, if we can get some money through those programs to prepare ourselves for something to happen again, a major emergency like this or pandemic, to give us the resources to put in better communication, things, better video conferencing, to be able to conduct all these board meetings and so forth via teleconferencing and so forth, rather than just doing it through Zoom. And of course, the broadband that we're going to be installing in August will be a huge help to that future.
Thanks for reminding me of that. I had introduced, and it was part of the Democrats' plan for the use of the CARES Act money to invest in town and state government infrastructure for exactly what you just talked about. I think that's crucial. We got to, if that's the kind of emergency preparedness planning you're thinking about, you're right, and Representative Harvey just said very similar things, we were not prepared for this, and we need to use some funds to do that. It won't take a lot. I mean, statewide, this might be $10 million, and on the whole big scheme of $1.25 billion, we should have been able to figure this one out.
I would underscore what Steve has said. We were allocated $91,000-something dollars, but so much of what we send in, that we've had to do as a result of this pandemic, has been denied because they say, oh, no, that really fits the job description of the person who's doing this extra work. What happens when we spend maybe, and get, we really only allocated $91,000, and we end up spending $10,000? Where does the rest of that money go? We could easily have used it to put a generator in so that, in fact, this town hall could function in a serious emergency. We don't have that generator. It doesn't count for this particular fund. So where, what's going to happen to the rest of that money?
That's a very good question.
And I think what governors will wind up asking, because I'm certain that, given the deadlines on these expenditures, I mean, even the PPPs that were the payroll protection program allocations, they won't all be used because you've got to return the money in the same manner that you just described. So I think that governors across the nation will ask the federal government to extend the deadline from December 30th of 2020 to allow a further distribution of aid. But I, I mean, it's just good feedback for us legislators to hear about municipal government needs.
Yeah, I think the current $91,000, it's too limited to what you can submit for, right? It's okay that we can get reimbursed for hand sanitizing, but that's really minor compared to all the labor costs that we're investing to sanitize all these chairs after you guys leave, and the tables, and so forth. So it's kind of, it's the restrictions that are placed on these funds, on these programs that really need to be looked at.
All right, Cynthia.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
Senator, do the provisions for potential virtual meetings extend to SB2 school district deliberative sessions?
Yes. I believe that's true. Well, you know, I, but I, that was true, that was true for this year, and it's, and the provisions that were true in the emergency order are tried to be brought forward in this House Bill 1129, so I believe, I believe it's, are you thinking not?
I'm not seeing the actual meeting provisions. I'm seeing a great deal of the absentee balloting provisions, but that doesn't mean that I haven't either had my eyeballs bounced because it's fun reading, or it could be in another bill because, of course, one of the things that we've had a great deal of fun doing is trying to figure out where my particular House bill with a particular House bill number went when it went to the Senate and came back on an omnibus bill, or, you know, where the Senate bills are now. So tracking has not been easy for us, so I'm not the definitive answer on that.
We can get back to you.
Yeah, I would just note that the SAU 60 district generally holds its deliberative session the first week of February. Even given the most optimistic provisions for vaccines and other things to help mitigate the virus, we very easily could be looking at the same situation we are now with significant social distancing and mask wearing and all of that by the first week of February. If we need to change, if we need to look at talking about changing that date or other things, then those discussions need to begin with our school district board now.
So if I can
Yes, please.
Communicate with you?
Yes, you may.
The answer to that question, and I'll copy Sarah.
And, you know, we don't have absentee ballots for town meetings. People don't get absentee ballots for town meetings, so that's going to be another complication. If people can't actually appear in person and raise their hand, they don't have a vote in town. So that's a great, and we had 135 people on March 14th, that was a record. We usually are around 100, and they came because we had that bond issue to vote on so that we could start our broadband expansion, thanks to you. It won't be in by next March, but they'll be working hard on it, so. Any other questions? Yes, Jeff.
I think my question is very good. A consequence of the pandemic will be greater emphasis on using the mail-in ballot process for the November 3 election. Could you comment on how well-resourced or prepared we are for the mail-in process?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that bill, and I believe it's 1266, so the governor did sign a vote from home, no excuse, but it's limited to 2020, 2020 elections. With one application, voters are able to request an absentee ballot for both the primary election and the general election. The election officials have five days in advance of the general election to open the outside envelope and see what name is on the inside envelope, and make a record, not the actual marking, but make a record of who has submitted a ballot, all in the effort of trying to accelerate in-person voting and not create a hang-up among the election officials trying to open and to get results as quickly as possible. There is likely to be a same-day absentee ballot request that would allow people to drive up and not have to enter a building if they have compromising issues. I should have said also, on the absentee ballot, what it changes is that you don't have to check, as in the current ballot, a handicap box. You can say, because of a COVID-related, I want an absentee ballot, and that's just your apprehension, or your underlying vulnerability, or any other attributed reason. I think election, I believe every town has already received requests for absentee balloting.
We have.
And that those ballots, you have not been able to send them out yet, but you're expecting to receive them yet this month, I think, for the primary election.
An application for an absentee ballot is on our website.
And that was just updated yesterday or this week, right? Yeah.
But I think the issue is that the governor only just signed that legislation, and so they're going to have to print the forms with the checklist. You know, if you get one that says, that doesn't have COVID as a reason, you are entitled to check the disability box, but they're now putting them out with the other. And I assume you're going to be getting the primary ballots relatively soon.
The primary ballots, Democratic and Republican, are also posted on our website.
Oh, you have them?
Under the tax collector's page. If you want to preview them, they are available.
Scouts?
We, I, I assume you're going to be opening schools in the SAU 60.
You don't have your guidance.
This is Bill Stahl, who is on the school board, Paul Mountain Regional School District.
Hi, Bill.
Bill, when are we going to hear from this school?
Well, we met today from 8:00 AM till about 2:30 this afternoon, discussing opening the school and all the ramifications and the twists and turns and all the things we have to consider. I cannot give you any specifics at this time, but what we came up with today will be presented to the school board on Monday, and then the larger group will meet on Tuesday to make sure we can fit it all in the way we need to. But things are, I'm cautiously optimistic. We've got a lot of smart people coming up with a lot of good ideas about this, and I wish I could get into specifics, but I can't.
Maybe next week.
Maybe.
Good. We know people are becoming more anxious by the day
Yeah.
About what's going to happen as we read about other school districts, so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate your convening and getting this kind of community engagement, and I also want to congratulate you on the bridge lighting.
Yes, we're very happy about that. We haven't signed the agreement yet. We made a few changes to the agreement and sent it back to the state, but we are going to have lights on the Arch Bridge. We've been fighting for that for several years because we've agreed to pay for the lighting. The state's going to put the lights up because we sort of, I think you all helped, leaned on them a little bit. They wanted us to do that, and we declined to put the lights up, but we'll take care of them once they're up and to pay for the lighting. So it will no longer be very dangerous as you come across the Arch Bridge in North Walpole to Bellows Falls.
A two-year effort, and I'm very legislative after I gave a call.
First term.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your coming. Lucy, Michael, Catherine, we're happy that you're here. Jay, thank you. This has been a very good session and educational, not just for those scouts, but all of the rest of us in this room as well, and we're very grateful that you came. I'm going to go back now to our regular agenda so that you'll see some of the, for the scouts, information, some of these things we do absolutely every week, such as approved payroll and our bills, accounts payable. That's routine work that the select board does on a weekly basis. So Steve?
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable check register in the amount of $224,096.82 for checks issued 7/24/2020. This includes a payment of $68,762.56 to the village of Bellows Falls for sewer usage and the bond payment.
Second.
Are there any questions about this, about the accounts payable? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the accounts payable as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes and the accounts payable are approved.
I make a motion to accept the payroll register in the amount of $34,257.20 and the 941 payroll tax transfer of $6,569.67.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and the payroll is approved.
I make a motion to accept the non-public select board session minutes of July 16, 2020.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about the non-public select board?
These minutes should remain sealed.
They should remain sealed.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The motion passes and the non-public minutes are sealed.
Second, we catch up on all the signatures.
We want to acknowledge the following committee reports. Cemetery trustees' meeting minutes of July 6, 2020. The town library board trustees' meeting minutes of June 10 and July 14. Planning board meeting of July 14, and the zoning board adjustment meeting in July 17, 2020.
Thank you. Those committee reports are acknowledged. You might ask what we're doing? That whole set of minutes that comes into us from all the other organizations in the town, departments in the town, are sent to us for our review, but not for our approval because they're approved by the specific committees who have sent them to us, and all we do is acknowledge receipt of them and that we have read them. Thank you.
We're just going to catch up on some signatures.
Oh, yes. We have to sign all these things, so because we're so far apart now, it takes longer. When we sat side by side, we could move paper quickly.
Back and forth.
Eric, do you want to sign this one?
I make a motion to accept building permit 2020-26 to construct a 23 by 22-foot family room addition on map eight, lot 107, sub lot zero.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about the building permit? Hearing done, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. The building permit is approved.
Everybody may wonder why we moved through these things pretty fast. It's because we've seen them in advance, and we were able to work out any questions or problems early on, so we didn't waste a lot of time in the select board meeting.
I make a motion to accept the notice of intent to cut timber on map nine, lot 12, sub lot two.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about this intent to cut permit? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Okay. Moving now to old business, and I will vote for the record that Dr. Shaw has joined us. He is our health officer in town, and he is here to discuss with us a number of issues, but one in particular is mask wearing, which we are all doing. As you know, last week at the select board meeting, the select board decided that we would mandate the wearing of masks in all public buildings, all town buildings. But we've had some people in town request that we mandated anywhere you go in town. And as you know, there's been legislation, I mean, there's been obviously a lawsuit recently involved in Nashua, and that legislative council mandated the wearing of masks no matter where you went in Nashua, and it was immediately challenged. Well, we've seen the results of that, and it was, of course, upheld. But we have not gone down their route to order masks for everybody. We've left it up to individual retailers and restaurateurs. But as we understand some of the RSAs, our health officer probably has more power about that than we do. He's sort of questioning whether he does or not, but I'm going to give you this microphone, Dr. Shaw, so that in fact you can talk to us about that and the health issues related thereto.
Good evening. Well, this is huge. We all know that. We're, we're all, we've all become amateur virologists since March, and the, there's obviously a lot of information and a lot to stay informed about. I was surprised when I found out that I had that much power as the voluntary health officer for the town, when some of the tasks that we've undertaken have been rather complicated and sensitive, but for the most part, it's more like inspecting daycare centers and talking to people about septic tanks. So the, the, the history on mask usage has been choppy and irregular, and unfortunately that creates mixed messages which have become politicized, and that's a very unfortunate thing. Today at 11 o'clock, I listened to the commissioner of education, Frank Edelblatt. It was a presentation on opening schools in New Hampshire. And prior to his coming on, the New Hampshire Health Officer Association, he told the story of a hairdressing salon in Missouri in May, that two hairdressers came, showed up positive for the COVID-19 virus, and they had tracked 138 patrons who had all been exposed to these two hairdressers. And none of them became COVID positive. And the point was, the hairdressers wore masks and all the patrons wore masks. So there's little doubt that a mask, and it doesn't have to be, this is my old dog's bandana, and they don't have to be high-tech, but what they do is, I think they do a number of things. Number one, they protect everybody else from an individual, from, from me. Number two, they protect me from infecting everybody else. There's a lot of power in that. There's a lot of data in that. There's a lot of truth in that. It's unarguable, in my opinion. Number three, it makes a statement. It makes a statement that we're taking this thing for real. We, in, in my business, in the veterinary hospital, we have lunch every Tuesday, and I present to them the, an update on COVID virus cases in Vermont, New Hampshire, and I break it down to Cheshire County, Sullivan County, Wyndham County, and Windsor County. And every week, we review the numbers. And one thing that we enjoy by living in this area is we are in an extremely low-risk area. But by seeing all the masks being worn tonight, seeing the masks in the community, obviously, we obviously respect the power that, that that is providing us. And so, thirdly, wearing a mask is as much making a statement about our acceptance that we have a serious health issue, and if we don't, if we don't respect it, we're going to turn into like the southern, western, midwestern parts of this country. And this, what's happened in the country is not even the phase two that they thought was going to happen in the fall when the weather starts getting cold. We haven't even gotten there yet. So there's a solidarity part to the statement of wearing masks. And an article about, that I read about bike helmets, seat belts, and condoms is the power of the plurality. The more people that are embracing and accepting wearing a mask, the more those that do not tend to feel pressured to join the majority. They're uncomfortable. There's no doubt about it. This is uncomfortable. And we work, part of our work is outside where it's hot and humid and uncomfortable. It's a small price to pay. We're allowed, somebody doesn't have a mask, we're allowed to walk away from that person, which is, which is a, our right as a citizen. So when I found out a week ago that the selectmen had, and I saw the sign sheet on the door entrance, which I liked, that they made wearing a mask in public buildings mandatory, that apparently I have the authority to make mask-wearing mandatory in, in public, in private places. And I, there's a couple of reasons why I don't want to make that mandatory. Number one, we're in a low, right now, we're in a low-risk area. We are, hundreds of people are watching the numbers. We're watching the data. Number two, because we are, so much of the activity around here is outside, it adds to the low risk. Now this said, don't you think there's a reason why Walmart and Target and Kroger and Kohl's have all made wearing masks mandatory if you're going in their store? It's not even an option. It's you will wear a mask or you won't come in the store. That said, and, and they've got a lot of really bright people who are crunching a lot of numbers and have seen the impact of the rising cases that we're experiencing in the majority, most of this country. They've seen the impact on their sales, and they're, they're heading this thing off. They've got a lot of really smart people. They see it. Things are getting worse. So they are doing something that I'm sure, from a business standpoint, they would rather not do, and yet they, and in my opinion, with limited leadership from the governmental level, they, businesses, communities, organizations are taking it upon themselves to institute policy that could easily have been a nationwide implementation of a, of a, of a policy. So my, at this point, like I say, my, my feeling is we need to continue conversations about this. A, we would strongly recommend that businesses have a mask policy. Definitely strongly recommend that if you can't maintain social distancing wherever you are, you wear a mask. And we're going to watch it. If things start to get worse, or get more critical, or get a little scarier, then I think we're going to revisit, revisit the, the issue. I would, been advised just before I came down here by, to an MD and a former MD who said, "Make the mask mandatory. Make the mask mandatory." You know, I think that, I understand that, but I think that we, as a town, need to, need to rely on our community spirit and our community strength, and I think it's going to be okay. And if we have to do something stronger, we will.
Thank you. While we're talking about, we have you with us. If you look at the agenda, you notice it says food. Well, because food is one of the issues at all elections in this town, because the Grange feeds all of the workers for one thing, but we also have food for all the voters, and that's become an issue as well. Do we continue that? In March, at our town annual meeting, we had planned that the Grange, as usual, would sell hot dogs. It's one of their fundraisers. And that we would, at the end of that meeting, have cake and coffee for all of the people who were in attendance. Well, I think two days, three days before?
No, it was the night before.
All right. The night before, we canceled all of that, and that issue has come up again. Do we feed people, the election workers in particular, that's one issue, because we have a number of people who work there election day, and the Grange has always fed them, both lunch and dinner. They come in, we have a great kitchen, and they cook in there and provide that food. But they have also, through donation, had people contribute cookies, brownies, whatever, so that the voters have something as they come in to vote. And that's an issue that I'm sure Jack Wozmac, who was our moderator, is beginning to consider, and we've been asked, do we in fact allow food on election day?
Can I see one more?
Yeah.
As I told you, I sat in on this, this webinar with Commissioner Baker, Education, and Billy Stahl's here, and obviously, there's been a lot of, a lot of, a lot of thought and anxiety. We're already dealing with a lot of anxiety. Now we're approaching school, which is adding layers and layers of more anxiety. But I think that one of the, because we're Fall Mountain of the five towns, I thought that there's an opportunity to, to have a conversation with all five communities about masks and, not a mask policy, but a mask, trying to set a mask statement, because the way that, the way that the kids are going to be safe, the way that the faculty is going to be safe, the way the administration is going to be safe, is if the community has little to no active issues with the virus. So there's, this thing ties together, and I think it's really vital that the community makes a strong statement that we are determined to minimize the impact of this virus for the protection of the kids so they can go to school.
Sure. I, I could use the mic if you want.
Sure, do, please.
I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on, on this, but my gut tells me a few things. Restaurants are open. You can go, you can get a sandwich, a fettuccine, you can get all those sorts of things. There are food service guidelines with respect to wearing masks and gloves and hand washing and sanitation that, at this point, and I think historically, statistically, up through this, have resulted in virtually no identifiable transmission of the coronavirus from food to people, from the surface of food to people. So, you know, when I look at the risk Dr. Shaw's talked about in the area and in the state with respect to the presence of the coronavirus, even if you increase it by 10-fold or 20-fold, you're still now talking about a very high risk. And there's still no scientific evidence of honesty that the virus is going to be in, in such concentration for such a duration on a food item that's going to make it that volatile. I think that, so I think the, the risk is low when we have food here and we have people observing masks, gloves, and hand washing, the same as any food sanitation standard as any, as any other place you go to get, to buy food, whether it's Shaw's or, or Birdix or wherever. So I don't frankly personally see that either the duration of contact with food, right, for a brownie or a hot dog, or the viral load that might be present on food is something that we ought to abandon, what I think is a pretty strong history, sorry for my back, of serving food at elections for the workers. We're here all day long, and so I kind of think it's kind of an important thing, and I think that there are precautions and protections that everybody that is serving food, buying food, making food, is taking now, that make it pretty reasonable. So maybe there's some modification to whether it's self-serve or whether the server with their gloves and a mask is saying, "What can I get you?" So that there aren't people touching the food. And that might be changed. So maybe the food gets back a bit, and there's enough separation from the people so that they can say, "Can I have a brownie, please?" And somebody would go and so forth, does it in a safer manner. So that's my, I mean, that's my personal sense. I, I think that, you know, when you talk about what does it take to be exposed to the coronavirus, the two things that, that I've looked at in terms of being the director of human resources for 195 people who are in the human service business, dealing with persistently and chronically mentally ill people, which is a profoundly vulnerable population to begin with, that social distancing when you can, and hand washing and masks is doing a fantastic job of, of keeping control and still being able to get the job done. So, but when you look at the viral load and the likelihood of transmission, the two factors that you look at are duration and proximity, right? So you could be next to somebody who's profoundly ill, but if you're just passing by them on the street, the likelihood of transmission is very low. And so, I'm also an ENT, so I'm always in the back of an ambulance, and we're all wearing masks, and we're wearing gloves, and so we're very close to somebody. We're like within 10 or 12 inches of them for 30 or 40 minutes while we're trying to, you know, get them to the hospital. And we still don't have, we statistically, and as a matter of public health, we have no exposure under those circumstances. And so, as a public health matter, if I'm with a COVID patient and I have protective equipment on and I'm wearing gloves and a mask, if, if I get asked, "Have you been exposed?", the public health answer is no. So there's a difference between being near somebody who might have the coronavirus and... So there's a difference between being near somebody who might have the coronavirus and the circumstances of being exposed to it. If you protect yourself from being exposed to it, you haven't been exposed. It doesn't matter what the person's going through, right? So I don't wanna get too deep on it, but I think, you know, when we talk about risk like Dr. Shaw has, and we talk about the duration and the proximity, how long does it come in, how long does it take to vote? You're next to somebody, you're, you're this far away from the clerk checking in, there's, there's a shield, an underwear, a mask and protection. You're gonna go alone to a booth and you're gonna sit there in the booth for a few minutes. We'll have fewer booths, there'll be more spacing, there won't be quite the number of booths, so people won't be next to each other. And even if they are, they're only there for a very few minutes. And they walk around, they check out, the ballot goes in the machine, and in a matter of minutes, they're out of there. So again, proximity and duration. I like the idea about the masks. I really wish everybody that comes into the building would wear them. I'm not aware that we have any legal authority with respect to the voting to force them to, but I could be wrong, I'd be happy to be wrong with that. But I think the constitutional imperative of allowing people to vote would, would be, would be a difficult thing, if you prevent somebody from voting because they won't wear a mask coming in. But, you know, you, obviously, we have people that do not feel as though they wanna wear a mask, that, that they have that right to not wear a mask. Of course, I have to think they also, I have a right to not be exposed to them, right? They don't have a right to infect other people potentially. So, but that's the balancing act that all of us have seen play out over these last few months in terms of who has the rights anyway. So I'm not personally, at this point, against the service of food if it's done in a food service way that complies with food sanitation standards with gloves and masks. So I'm happy to be challenged on that, but at the moment, I, I, I just don't see, I don't see it as being that risky.
Thank you. I don't think, well, we're not gonna solve that issue right now, but I think this is, I'm gonna hear from Lucy first.
I just wanted to, um, I'm, I'm not challenging anything anybody said, I agree with all of it. I just want to issue one small caution, which is that we were down to returning the tests for people who wanted a test. We got them back in about 48 hours routinely, and now people are back to waiting a good week, sometimes even more, before their test results come back. So as we are, the cohort of us who have little charts at home with all those numbers, as we're looking at them, there's a much bigger time lag right now. And you're beginning to see that, 'cause we have a pileup of tests one day and a shortfall of tests the next day. But I just wanna say, you know, we're now looking three weeks out from exposure rather than two weeks out from exposure. And while we have very low numbers here in the county, I noticed that statewide, our hospitalizations have started to creep up again, and that's the number that I look at, 'cause that's real and happening right now. So I just, I just offer that as a concern going forward, and I know you're all looking at it and thank you.
We absolutely are. Leroy? Give your hand up, Nick.
Yeah, I'm Leroy Watson, I'm the Vice President of Walpole Grange. Walpole Grange held its monthly meeting here in this room on Tuesday night, and we had probably about a 45, 50-minute discussion on this issue. And after a lot of deliberation back and forth with the members, the people who have been involved for many years in preparing the meals, we set up a committee to go through and figure out exactly what types of measures we can take in order to be able to serve food safely to the poll workers. We're also gonna be looking at other issues that we might be able to do related to be able, able to present some, some goodies to voters in case that. But primarily, we wanna make sure that we can do a food preparation program. We're gonna be talking with a number of the restaurants we have here in town. We're gonna be looking at our menu management in a way to sort of reduce the probability of exposure. Are there ways that we can adjust the menus and the items that we're serving so that there's minimum opportunity for exposure? So, and, and that committee is, 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 is put together and is now working to try and be able to get that. So we're happy to work with the town moderator and, and the board related to, um, you know, being able to provide the meals for the, uh, the workers in particular. And some of the discussions we had with some of our older members, this is a tradition that dates back 65, 70 years. So Walpole Grange has been proud to, you know, help serve the election officials over the years, and, uh, at least as of our meeting on Tuesday, there was a clear consensus among the members and among a lot of people that we would be able to continue to do that in a safe and effective manner, but we were happy to work with whoever we need to work with in order to assure that that's there, including, including, for example, pre-notification of menus. So in case anybody has any issue about an item or something like that, that we can get, we can get around it. We can work with you in order to make sure that the food preparation is, is safe, meets all guidelines, and it minimizes as much as humanly possible any risk of transmission.
Thank you.
I have, yeah, I have no question about the quality of the food or anything like that. My concern is that we have to maintain social distancing when the masks are on. And I know the election workers, it's a small group, it's easy to manage, but if we have all those goodies out there, people are gonna grab them, take the mask off, try to eat it right there, and there'll be somebody next to them, and it's gonna be hard to control the social distancing in that regard, but in any case, the workers, it's a small group, it's easier to maintain and, and take care of. So I hope you consider that in your thinking.
I think, well, the first, the primary is what, September 8th?
Yeah.
So decisions will be made, yes, before then, obviously, and Jack will be very involved in that as, as moderator.
I, I agree with Stephen. I, I, we, I'm quite sure that it can be worked out in terms of the number of service stations, the distance apart, if we're gonna wrap them up, tell them, you know, don't, don't all eat together, maybe take it with you, whatever, you know, like they do.
Yeah.
And I, and I certainly hear what Lucy's representative Weber's talking about in terms of testing. You know, the issues of course are the tests take too long to get back, and at least statistically, there's up to 30, 40% false negative result. That's problematic. Sometimes there's false positive. We're testing everybody at the nursing home on a very regular basis, everybody. And, uh, but, but you still have the backdrop, which is why masks are strong portent and hand washing, that at least 30 or more percent of the population is asymptomatic传染 感染. So the test result is almost irrelevant in the sense that you could be perfectly fine and still be able to transmit it, which is what makes the masks so important. It's irrelevant that you feel good, right? So I, I, I think the Grange is gonna be fine with it. I know they're gonna come up with the right solution, they're gonna talk to the right people. And I, I just can't imagine going through an election without a hot dog, or a town meeting without a hot dog, what more? What have we come to?
Thank you all. So that you don't think we're gonna be here all night. But thank you, Chuck, for your input. And as you travel around town, you'll notice that a great many of our businesses and restaurants have decided on their own that you must have a mask on to come in to do business with them. So the majority of places in town are in fact setting some good rules for all of us to, and speaking of food, I tell you carefully that I baked these brownies today for the Boy Scouts, so I hope that before they leave, they will in fact have a brownie up here. And I washed my hands carefully before I cut them, after I put them on a plate, and when I brought them in here, so.
Okay, moving along.
We're moving along. We're going on to the next item on the agenda, which is, which has been referenced today already, and that is the 23, 20, 2032, am I on the right? Yes, here it is. The Southwest Regional Planning Commission letter to us involving the 10-year plan for transportation improvements, and which we are invited to make comment on.
I think the only comment that I would add is that we support the opening of the Flyless Bridge, repair of the Flyless Bridge.
Yeah, and we don't have any, I'm not aware of any highway projects that were qualified to be submitted at this time.
No. I couldn't think of anything either.
I think that's typically why we support the opening of the Flyless Bridge.
I think that the only one we possibly talked about in the past was the intersection at the Shaw's Plaza.
Yes.
You know, where there's the crest of the hill, there's limited visibility. But I don't think, and then I think the last one we talked about that several years ago was to look at the crotch date, and there really wasn't a lot of history of accidents there. So I don't think there's anything else at this time.
Last meeting I had a couple of years ago with the DOT, they didn't wanna see any traffic lights or anything on the job.
No, they've not ever supported the suggestion.
They don't want that at all, so.
But we can.
Well, I don't think we're proposing adding that, we're just expanding the.
Turn lanes and things like that, I'm really not happy with the [inaudible].
Well, I will send a note on our behalf, just an email, to the Southwest Regional Planning Board that we support and urge the rehabilitation of Flyless Bridge. And we're sorry to always see it as number 10.
So far, it hasn't been there at all, so we gotta.
I know, I know. But we're lucky to have it on the list at all. That's absolutely right. The next item on the agenda is the letter that we have received, which refers to the office building going up in North Walpole in their industrial district, and the questions as to whether or not it is really as it purports to be. I think this frankly is nothing that we address right now, but in fact, see to it that North Walpole.
It's a North Walpole issue.
It is a North Walpole issue, so, and I believe the letter has been sent to the commissioners. The next item we have really involves a soccer net on the Drewsville Common. There's been a request, and somebody has donated, is that right, that donated?
Yes. They would like to donate this regulation soccer net to be used on the Drewsville Common. I don't have any objection to it, but I'll leave it to the recreation committee to really decide if they wanna have it with a soccer net there or not.
I'll follow up with Craig.
Yeah, I have no objection to it either, but I do think the recreation committee should weigh in on it as to whether there's a net there. And maybe one that needs to be discussed slightly with the residents presumably around the common?
I think it is a resident.
Oh, it is a resident who's proposing it, okay. Is there any other new business to come up tonight? Not, we're sort of working in a different order. We usually take old business first, so, but we're going back to old business and the sewer easement for that. Have you both had a chance to read this?
Yes.
And do you have questions or comments about it?
I would recommend we forward Mark Owen's comments back to Jeremy Hoffman.
I agree. I, I'm like.
Certainly he started off with his comments.
Yeah, I think his too. My only concern about it was the fact that the sewer ordinance may not remain the same for perpetu- perpetuity. It should, as a matter of fact.
For purposes of everybody here, we're trying to get a easement on Hunting Lane here by Chamberlain Machine so that we can, in the future, be able to extend our sewer line past those properties to the back, for future development purposes. We had one person that wanted to connect to the sewer line and ultimately backed out because there wasn't an easement that would allow him to do that. So it's been quite a long hall and quite complicated because there's many owners in the properties.
Yes, it's a very, you know, it's a lengthy easement that's been drawn up because of all the people who have to agree to it. So we just wanna make sure that it is, it provides for the future and isn't sort of stuck in the past, frankly, by the way it's written right now. So we'll do that, we'll forward it to Jeremy Hoffman. Just quickly, the Brownsfield has gone through another testing site, and as expected, they found some PFAS. There was a PFAS tank in the old central plating, and it migrated a bit, but not much. And they're not concerned, the company with whom we're working on cleaning that property up, Ransom Consulting, recognizes that the state of New Hampshire has yet to set very specific cleanup standards for PFAS in soil. So we don't expect that there will be any difficulty in our cleaning this up and removing what's there. Fortunately, in its migration, it's been negligible, but it is present. The next item we have, well, just for information's sake, we will be appearing at the planning board in August because we are now moving for lot line adjustments on the piece of property which really constitutes a parking lot next to the recreation area and the Walpole Elementary School. Our purchase of that property was approved on, in March, by a vote among all the towns that belong to the Fall Mountain School District. And we agreed that we would buy it for a dollar from Fall Mountain, who currently owns the property, but the expense of making the survey and the land transfer is all at the town. And when we surveyed it, it, the survey turned out slightly differently than the survey that had been done back in the early, in 1982. So we're correcting all of those things and going to the planning board and expect that it will be approved there without any difficulty. And the town will then own that parking lot next to the recreation area, and we will be filing a letter to the select board that confirms, as we record that new deed, will confirm that the school has access to that property and can park on that as well. Any questions?
I'm glad you see that in the September meeting, it'll come along.
Is there any other old business to come up at this point? I don't think so. I'm going to ask them that we go into the Hooper.